This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Zephyr Hills City Council meeting, Monday, June 9th, 2025. Ricardo, could we have the roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Lance Smith?
Here.
Jody Wilkerson? Charles Proctor?
Here.
Kenneth Burgess?
Here.
Steven Spina?
Here.
Mayor Monson?
Here.
William Poe?
Here.
Matthew Maggard?
Here.
We have a new system up here. It's gonna take me a few months to get used to it, but if everyone would please silence their cell phones, that would be great. I appreciate it. And could we have Pastor Fran Stubbs from the Oasis Church come and give us the prayer, and then we'll do the pledge, if you want to stand.
There we go. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to come and pray. I want to begin our prayer with reading a verse of scripture from Jeremiah 29 and verse 7, and it says, "Work for the good of the city, which I have exiled you, and pray to Yahweh, asking for a blessing on your city, since your peace depends on its peace." So, Father, we pray according to your word today. We pray, Father, for the peace of Zephyr Hills. We pray, Lord, for our leaders here, that as they sit in this meeting today and govern, that you will speak to their hearts, that you will cause them, Lord, to decide according to your will. We thank you, Lord, that you will bless them and strengthen them, as they have to make hard decisions for our city. And we just ask you, Lord, that every need that the city has, that you would meet it for your glory, and that you alone will be glorified in all things. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Ms. Stubbs, for that great prayer. And now, do we have citizens' comments? Do we have anyone signed up, Ricardo?
I do not have anyone signed up at this time.
Is there anyone that would like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Yes, come. Would you state? Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Francesca Stubbs, 6440 12th Street, Zephyr Hills. Okay, so I want to read something as I'm talking. So this is my words to you all. So, good evening to our respected City Council President, Mr. Proctor, Council Vice President, Dr. Spina, our Honorable Mayor, Melanie Monson, and esteemed council members. Thank you for granting me the privilege to address you today. I stand before you as the founder and chief operating officer of Oasis Community Outreach and Cafe, to share the critical needs of our community and to seek your invaluable support. Oasis Community Outreach and Cafe has taken on the humbling task of being a beacon of hope for many in our city since the unfortunate closing of Healing Hearts Cafe in December 2024, providing essential support to those facing hardship. Recently, we have witnessed a dramatic rise in families with young children seeking our services, driven by economic challenges and job losses. Our mission has expanded from feeding the homeless to supporting entire families who find themselves in desperate need. While we are deeply grateful for the generous contributions of food and supplies from our donors, some financial seeds from our friends in our community, and the huge support shown from our church, Oasis Church, and its members, these donations do not always cover all of the growing financial overhead necessary to maintain and carry out our operations. Despite our best efforts, including a commendable grant application applied for through Pasco County for community development funds, we were not selected due to a limited amount of funding available and the number of organizations with similar applications here in the East Pasco region. As we face the summer months and an increasing number of children out of school, the need for our services grows ever more urgent. I come before you with a heartfelt appeal for financial assistance as our city council and community leaders. Your support would enable us to continue our outreach, expand our programs, and ensure that every individual and family, especially those with children in our community, has access to basic necessities that they deserve. I'm asking the city to look into their budget and to assist with funding our community endeavor. We are a 501(c)(3) organization operating under the auspices of Nisi's Hope for Kings and Queens, who seeks to be able to continue our assistance for the residents of our beloved neighborhood. But we know collaboration and help from our partners will provide a significant boost. Together, we can build a stronger, more resilient community where everyone has the opportunity to thrive. Thank you for your time, your compassion, and your commitment to our community. I look forward to the possibility of partnering with you to make a lasting difference in the lives of those we serve here in our beautiful city of Zephyr Hills. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stubbs. I appreciate that.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Pastor, do you work with CHIPS at all?
I do.
Okay, because we provide some funding to CHIPS, and we also provide a homeless unit in our police department. Are you working with them as well?
We are. And so Kathy, who is head over that, whenever we have things that we can do to collaborate with one another, we call each other. And actually, she sent a message to me earlier today to see if we had need of some things, like hygiene items and things of that nature, which we already had. And so we do partner with them, and I do attend the CHIPS meetings on a monthly basis.
Okay, because I think that it's important. I mean, the idea of CHIPS was to bring different groups together, so everything's under kind of one umbrella. And I think before we were to, you know, pledge more money to another organization, that I'd like to see what you can do with CHIPS and work with the police department and see if we can't resolve these issues. Because CHIPS does all those things as well, working with providing utility reimbursements, trying to keep family in their houses, and then finding emergency care and things like that.
They do. However, the lack is for children. And that's where the children fall into the gap. So we have had parents who were in between places or whatever, and they have armed babies. And they're coming into the cafe for meals and for pantry, to come and get food pantry items and different things of that nature. And that's where CHIPS does not, you know, meet that need. And so that's where, you know, we're trying to make sure that we shore up all of those things as well. And so we do have, as I stated, we do have donors who do help, but there's still a shortfall. So that, you know, whenever you're doing volunteer work, and we do have some of our volunteers that are here with us, and they work for no pay and different things of that nature, and we appreciate their labor of love. But all of those things add to our overhead, because we have to ensure that we are able to still keep the lights on and still do all the things that are necessary to ensure that the program runs.
Okay, all right. Billy, is there maybe, we're gonna be working on the budget here fairly soon. Maybe we can look to see if there's anything we can do to help them in some way, especially that was a great idea, Councilman Spina, of them reaching out to the CHIPS program with the police department. But maybe when we're going through the budget, we can see what we can do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to the council? Seeing none, I will move on to the mayor. Madam Mayor?
Yes. I have one emergency item that I need put into the agenda. It's the CRA purchase of land. If we could do that, please. Push your button.
Mr. President, I would move to put the mayor's emergency item on the agenda.
Second. I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Do we want to, you're gonna deal with that one first?
Yeah. Can we ask the CRA director to come forward?
So you got it, all right.
Press your button.
I never had a button before. So the item before you tonight is, the CRA has the opportunity to purchase two lots at the corner of Fourth Street and Fifth Avenue, which is next to the Hoffer property, which the CRA already owns, and the Zephyr Park. The question before you tonight is, according to our policy, if it is less than $80,000 or less, the city council can deem an appraisal is not necessary before purchasing the land. It's two lots, $40,000, we'd say $40,000 each. And, yes, if you could put it up for me, thank you, Ricardo. We have a picture of the corner, if it doesn't ring a bell to you.
It's directly next to Zephyr Park.
It is directly next to Zephyr Park.
Kind of a little diagonal to the tennis courts.
Yes, yes. There it is, right there. That's the corner. And so what staff is asking for the city council to approve the purchase and not having an appraisal first.
What are we planning on, what was your plans with the property? Is it for parking or whatever?
All of the above. As soon as we own the property, I will send it to our designer for the park, our consultant that's working on the CRA plan. But the idea is to have control over it, because it is such an important corner, that we can come up with a great idea for it. I'd hate to use it, that's a great corner, and hate to use it for just parking, but for right now?
Yeah, I was gonna say, if I may, yeah, I don't think we'd want to just build a parking lot on the corner on Fifth Avenue when we're trying to develop it. But I do believe it's important to be figured into what we're doing at Zephyr Park. And with those other, I mean, it could be an important asset, the way it's linked to the other vacant property along Fifth Avenue.
That is correct, absolutely.
This money is coming out of the CRA?
That is correct. The CRA has $300,000 approved by the CRA board already for the purchase of land, so it will not require any additional funding. Funding is already approved in the budget.
All right.
Where did we come up with this number, 79, that's just to stay under $80,000?
The asking price was 89.9.
I was gonna say, what was the asking price?
Original price was 89.5.
And I know we're not doing an appraisal, but, and I hate to lean on another council person, but he has a little bit of knowledge. I mean, is that kind of a good price for?
Yeah, I kind of looked at a couple other properties on the OneWays, and it's 60 by 140, that's what it is. I think the value lays in it being adjacent to property that we're going to do something with. And I agree with Councilman Spina that the use would certainly be some type of retail, retail use that would be complementary to what we're doing in the park area.
Right. That's what I think.
Yeah, and I feel the price is good.
And I will tell council that individually, I did speak to Chairman, the CRA Chair, Dr. Spina, and also CRA Board Member Smith about the purchase. If he had said, "No, Gail, that's too much money," we would have, we would have stopped.
Do we have any more questions for Ms. Gail?
If not, I'll, I move that we purchase this property.
Sorry. The motion needs to say and bypass the requirement for appraisal.
I move that we purchase this property at $79,999.99 and bypass the appraisal process.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Consent agenda items, we have?
One second. I just have one more thing on my side. Sorry.
Go ahead.
So it is time for the city manager review. So I will be sending out a link to you guys. Actually, I'll probably, since I'm leaving tomorrow, I'll probably have Ricardo send that out to you, a link that you can do, a fillable form. Or if you'd rather have a handwritten form, he has those here, too. If so, just let him know after the meeting. And then if I can get them back the first week of July, that would be great. And that will give me a month, and we will have it ready for August, the first meeting in August.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we have a total of 13 consent agenda items. We can vote on them all at once, or if any council member wants to pull one for discussion, we can do that, or I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to pull three of them, then. I would like to pull 1.10, 1.12, and 1.13.
1.10, 1.12, and 1.13.
Mr. President, then I'd like to pull 1 point, the GAGNY, whichever, the GAGNY property.
1.5. All right. I will entertain a motion on the rest of the consent agenda items.
Move to approve the rest of the remaining items?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we want to discuss, you want to start with 1.5?
Sure. And my question was, I know evidently this is, it's an extension of a line, and they're paying, we're actually giving them credits for the upsizing of the line that'll handle other.
Correct.
When we did this, are we still using the payment for water credits? And are we not guaranteeing them we have water? I mean, is it written in, in that agreement somewhere?
They have water because, because of the agreement.
Oh, so they're gonna pay the credit front?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, and, okay, and?
So this is an agreement that was signed. So they were guaranteed the water previously, and they were upsizing five different segments of the line. And then once the field inspection took place, we realized that, I think it's three of the five sections, the lines were properly sized, so there's not a requirement to upsize. So we're modifying the agreement to take out those upsizing of those three segments, and then modified or amended the number, the credit number, reduce that.
And I just wanted to make sure we had the water. I was sure of it, but I just wanted to ask.
Correct, yes. Okay, I'm fine. I'd move approval of this item.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve item 1.5. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. 1.10.
Okay, I have a question that, this is the reclaimed water line that's going from County Road 54 along Island Boulevard, and then it connects to the county. Where and how does it connect to the county?
Looks like it's already on. Yeah, John Bostic, Utilities Director for the city. Yes, it's connecting just on the west side of Simons Road, at what, Simons Island Boulevard intersection, that'll be connected to them.
All right. That's the line that the county had that is not in use anymore? Is that right?
Oh, no, it's in use.
And that comes from the plant and runs to Silver Oaks Golf Course or Silverado Golf Course.
All right. I thought the reclaimed water in Silver Oaks wasn't in use anymore.
Oh, sorry, yeah. Currently, they're not utilizing it, but the line is still available for use.
All right, so it'll be connected and then reutilized?
I'm not sure of the question. So what we're doing is, right now, Pasco County runs a line, and it goes into the plant, or I mean, excuse me, goes into the golf course. What we're proposing with this project is we're gonna extend the line that's currently on 54. We're gonna run it west along Island, and then we're gonna go to Simons Road and turn it north. The subdivision at Silver Oaks, Silver Oaks cottages, cottages of Silver Oaks, that's tying into that, to this proposed line, and the Abbott Square subdivision is tying into that line. So that gives us, that gives us, I don't know, 800, 900 units on that. Pasco County would still be able to pump to Silverado should they need it.
Okay, and, but that, our line is turning on to Simons, it's not going further. It's connecting to the county, and it'll go further west.
Correct. We're turning and going, we're connecting to Pasco, so we'll have an interconnect there. But the main goal of this is to turn it to the north.
Ours is going north.
Correct, yes.
Yes, yes.
Mr. President, and just, what's the thought on, or rationale for connecting to Pasco?
Well, it's kind of, they want our reclaimed water, and we need a wet weather storage area, so we can send this water over to Pasco when or if necessary.
So, okay, so, and it's based on our criteria, right? I mean, by connecting to it, we're not guaranteeing them water.
Oh, no, no, no.
Because I think that's a commodity, and it's a valuable commodity.
Yes.
And it's gonna become more valuable in the future.
Absolutely.
Okay, so there's no, we don't have any, anything written in there that says we supply you with X amount of water?
No, absolutely not. No, I would not do that.
But didn't you just say they want our water?
I didn't say I wasn't gonna give them.
Okay, okay, well.
Because it might not be available.
You didn't say that part.
Yeah, it's based on the, us getting, getting water to Pasco is based on the availability of water. So if we're utilizing it all on our residents, it doesn't go to Pasco. If we have excess, especially during wet weather events, then it'll go, it'll be pushed to Pasco, or can be pushed to Pasco.
And that's when we may have trouble getting rid of all of it, right?
Yes.
Is during those events.
And that is, we're limited right now.
That is, has been a problem, right? But we've had, needed to get rid of.
Permit related, yes. We need to get rid of excess water.
And when we're talking about getting rid of water, we're talking about reclaimed only.
Yes. Oh, absolutely, reclaimed water, yes.
We can't get rid of other water. Can't get rid of what you don't have.
Right.
All right, then, thank you.
You're welcome.
Entertain a motion.
I move that we approve item 1.10.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve item 1.10. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay, 1.12. This is, the city has advertised for RFP responses for general construction services for all departments when necessary. What is this about?
This item, we went out to bid to get general contractors, so that when we have projects come in, we're able to reach out to these companies, get prices and move forward, and not have to spend time going out to bid, going through the whole entire bid process. We've already done the qualifications, so we can just go to prices with these individuals.
Right.
That's the same with item 1.13 as well.
Right. So these projects will come to city council?
The projects would still come to city council for approval. And then, say, just if we picked RCM Utilities to do a sewer line, it would come to council for approval, and then also the contract would come before council, as long as it's over $50,000.
Okay. And by city facilities, you mean, well, you said utility lines, but what kind of city facilities do you mean, like?
If we have gutters that need to be put on the depot, window replaced, the dais needs to be rebuilt.
We talking small construction projects, basically?
Correct. Yeah, so I mean, it's kind of?
It's similar to what we do with our engineering, continuing services agreements with engineers.
Well, I understand that, but I'm more concerned about what projects you're talking about, that?
We don't necessarily have any defined at the moment. So it's dependent, it's budget dependent and council approval dependent.
And if it's under $50,000, it'll still come to council?
It'll come as a noted item. I mean, so if it's a budgeted item, so the city manager has authority to sign anything at under $50,000. So depending on the item, I mean, you'd be notified of it, but it doesn't necessarily come to council for approval. So if we decided to put gutters up at the depot, and it was $40,000, it would, it would not have to come before council for approval. We would, that would come to me, I would sign it, and we'd get the job done.
I have a couple questions, too. So you have, well, one of them looks more utility, and the other three appear to be, you know, multi. So on this, it just speeds the process up? Like if you, like say you can do gutters, you call those three, four people up, say, hey, how much are these gutters gonna cost on this? And it's, it could be that much, that much quicker. We don't have to go through a whole big, a whole thing over and again every time?
Correct.
Makes sense.
Now, is that pretty much, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Don't we, isn't there a threshold now that we have that, what's the threshold now for requiring a bid, or more than just three estimates?
50,000. So the first, anything over $5,000 is three quotes, then anything over 50,000, so 5,000, sorry, anything over, under 5,000 is, we can just go get the job done.
Okay.
Anything 5,000 to 50,000 is three quotes, and then 50,000 and above is actual bid.
And would the 50,000 about be these guys, or?
It could be both.
Either one?
It could be either one.
And you anticipate getting all of them to price it, and then if only one prices it, would you be like, well, wait a minute, I might, we might need to do something?
Depending on what, yeah, depending, it's all gonna be project dependent.
Okay.
Well, yeah, and I mean, a couple of them. One is utilities, and one is meters. So that looks like that would be the utility department. But, okay. But, okay.
Is that pretty much the same for one point one three as well?
Yes, sir, yeah, same concept, different, different things.
You know, some of these things I don't think should be on the consent agenda. I think they should be put out so that we can talk or as, or know what they're about. Okay, so I move we approve one point twelve.
Second. Motion.
Second.
In a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And one point one three.
Okay, so then this is a larger one then?
And just to clarify, these are awarding the bids, the contracts will come back next meeting.
Right, so these are larger projects, so it looks like, with these kind of.
So these are, these are projects for, so these are larger projects, correct? So these would be construction managers at risk. Very similar to how we built City Hall, how we built the tennis facility, how we're propos, or how we're building, or how we built Hercules Park and how we're building the maintenance yard or city yard. So these are projects, anything that's under two million dollar design and under seven and a half million dollar project construction cost, estimated construction cost. We would be able to use these individuals. Very similar where we, we go get them, they come in, do the C Mar, give us the guaranteed maximum price and then we move forward. If the design's over two million dollars or the estimated project cost is over seven and a half million dollars, then we have to go out and do a formal bid, like we've done on the previous projects.
So these would be projects under seven and a half million dollars?
Correct.
So they wouldn't be the city yard, they wouldn't be Zephyr Park, they wouldn't be City Hall. So what, what projects would they be?
Anything that's under seven and a half million dollars. I don't, I don't, again, it's not project specific. So if we decide to do new ball fields at Cruz and Field and they come in at seven million dollars, we would be able to utilize this list. If we. Do Clock Plaza is a, is a good example.
Well, the remodel, the concession at Cruz and Fields, wasn't that?
No, that was a, I don't think we did C Mar on that one.
It wasn't a remodel, it was building a shelter.
Plaza is a good example where we can take one of these four, bring them on, get a price and, and move forward and not have to go through the bid process. Because it's, the design will be less than two million dollars and the estimated construction cost is below seven and a half million dollars.
Real quick, like SEMCO, where, where are they from? I, I mean, we're familiar with A.D. Morgan and Warren Smith. Where? Lakeland, okay.
I don't, I was not on the selection committee.
Well, I kind of liked that there is a couple of local, I mean, in Ryman, obviously, we have a local person, you know, on there. And I'm glad that you guys did that too.
And when you have this, I mean, you, all four will get an opportunity to price a bid on the, the project? Because I, yeah, if I, I mean, in other words, I give it to, you give it to those four, they give you back their estimate.
No, I don't think, I think you go to the one, let's say, well, is SEMCO Utilities based more or less? Okay.
It's construction.
Yes, Utilities won't have much that will hit the threshold of seven and a half million dollars. But we will most likely be up to, up to two million dollars on projects for us.
For the design or the construction or both?
Correct, both.
Okay.
Yes, yes. I think that would be more so bigger buildings and things along that line.
Shane LeBlanc, Public Works Director, if I can just add a couple of things. Typically when we use a C Mar, Construction Manager at Risk, we get them involved with the design of the project in the early stages. And then that C Mar works with the design group to design and value engineer. And then when we get to ninety percent design, the C Mar submits a guaranteed maximum price. So these C Mars would be based on their qualifications and not pricing, because they couldn't give you a price on something that didn't have ninety percent plans. If that helps.
Well, I, I know, understand what you're saying, but I think what they're getting is, or we would want to get to four bids, in other words.
Well, they've already gone to bid and these guys have given them.
On a specific project though, so we're kind of like.
They're locked in.
They're locked in, because whatever, whatever we budget, that's going to be the number.
You got it.
So I think we need, I think we need, I think we need the four bids from those four different peoples.
With a C Mar, with a C Mar, it's, it's based on qualifications, so you do like a request.
Yeah, but I'm assuming we, we picked all forty, so they have qualifications, wouldn't we?
Right.
I mean, I know it could be a huge project, but, well, no more than seven point five.
To any of the four we want. We can, we can assign it to any of the four we want. We do the same thing with engineering at the airport now. We have a couple different engineers and task specific, we assign it, or we did, I don't know if we're still doing it that way. So they wouldn't be able to give a bid. You would have to pick one of the four for a project on a C Mar and go with that. Entity, that company, and then like Chain said, once it's designed, then they would issue the guaranteed maximum price. So it's all based on the qualifications. This just says that we're, we're comfortable with these for, these four, for these, these size projects. And it'll be up to staff to determine which of the four get the project.
Well, let me ask you this then, so let's say we do a bathroom somewhere every year for four years. Are we going to determine that one guy's qualified and they're going to get all four? Or are we going to rotate down through the four of them or how are we going to do this?
I think if it's that type of work, it wouldn't be a C Mar, it'd be under the general construction agreement. And it would be, we could, we could get multiple bids. If, if three of the four do that type of work, we can take, you know, they can submit bids on that. On the general construction side for small projects like that. The C Mar is a different deal.
Yeah, I get it, but I just.
Different than what we did for Hercules. We, with Hercules, we brought in the, the contractors that gave a, a presentation. We selected them on qualifications, we hired them, then they gave us the price and we signed a contract to move forward. All we're doing is doing the qualifications, the selection on qualifications. And then we're, they're sitting on the shelf until we have a project ready. And then at that point, they give us the price.
Okay, so let's use the Clock Plaza then. You're going to hire A.D. Morgan, you're going to.
We're going to hire a C Mar.
You're going to hire a C Mar.
Yeah.
But you had this project, let's say the Clock Plaza, how do you start it? What do you do first?
We.
You go to somebody to design?
Yeah, we get a design, architect to, engineer to design it.
And the CRA has a list of architects already that they can pull to design that.
Correct.
So they're going to design it and then they're going to bring the plan in, the ninety percent or whatever.
No, we get, at about thirty percent, actually, for that, if we can, then we bring on the C Mar. Bring on the C Mar at the beginning of the design process.
Okay, how do you select one of these four?
I think we look at it as a staff and determine which one we think will do the best job for the, the project that's proposed. And we make that selection.
Why can't we have them all put in a bid? And pick the lowest one?
Well, you've kind of already done that process.
Does, and I, I'm going to ask a question because everything's, and I know we were in a, in a, in an economic time when everything is escalating. But we haven't done a project that's come even close to what they estimated. I mean, look at the city yard, I, I mean, I get it. But is this manner of doing it the most efficient way to do it? I don't, you know, I question that, I don't know.
I, I do also.
Well, when we do the C Mar, we still get hard bids, right? So we still get hard bids for every sub. And the, the bids are opened in front of staff. So the contractor, whoever the, the C Mar is, they, they schedule an opening, they come to City Hall typically and we sit and open them. So we see the bids that come in for every sub. There have been times on projects where there's like one or two subs that have bid. So the response is, we've got to go find a few more subs to get numbers, because we're not comfortable with the amount of respondents that we've had. So the, we, we're still seeing all the numbers, we're still seeing the hard bids, the subs are still bidding on the project. You know, is there a cause? I, I'm not going to tell you once more expensive or, or less expensive than the other. But I will tell you that we still receive hard bids and we see those and we can get copies of all those as needed.
This is just another tool in our tool chest when we do have a project come up that we have already done the RFQ process and we have those four C Mars that we can turn to. And maybe as a staff, look at their project portfolio. If we think one contractor might be a little more attuned to building a park versus one of the other contractors, is that something that we would look at in-house as a committee and make a recommendation to the city council?
All right, so this is just a process of getting qualified companies online, basically. So when we do, let's say, let's just use the Clock Plaza. We're going to do the Clock Plaza, it's going to be like five million dollars, just to throw out a number. And.
I'll anchor your numbers, I didn't bid them, I mean, I didn't budget them.
All right, well, I'm just saying, a number, three million dollars.
Okay.
And then, so you have it now, you've already hired the design firm. And they're going to, at thirty percent or so, you're going to then approach one or all four of these to see how you hire them to do the actual construction.
And, and let me just throw one other thing in as we're talking about it. Council and, and the CRA Board has been very clear to staff that we are taking too long to get projects done, that we need to hurry and get these done, because time is money. This will save us time in getting it done. If I had to go out and do an RFP for an architect, that's three to four months. Then after I get my architect, then I have to go out to bid for a. We tried to do Fifth Avenue and I didn't get anybody that responded. We had to do it three times before we got somebody to respond. And then it was over my budget, way over my budget. If we start at thirty percent and we go through thirty to ninety percent, we are working on that budget and, and we may have to cut things out, we may have to rearrange how we do it, we may have to break it into pieces. But at least we are moving forward to getting a project done, instead of going to the very end and bidding it and we don't have, we don't have the money to do it.
Do you have any design build firms that you can kind of do on these projects that would save more time maybe?
You go ahead, I know how you feel about, I know how you feel about design build.
We actually, as a staff, we kind of prefer the C Mar method over design build. Because if you have a design build project, we've done those in the past. The contractor has a little bit too much power and they're not a partner with the city like a C Mar is. A C Mar has a vested interest, once they give the city a GMP, well, they have to stick to that GMP. So they're a vested partner with the construction team.
GMP?
Guaranteed maximum price. So we prefer that method, because they're more of a partner and work with the city and they look out for the city's best interests versus a design build contractor that is basically getting some more of the profit than what a C Mar does.
Okay, all right.
It's kind of tough to explain.
How much, how much more time would it take if the four, we have what, four contractors on the list? How much more time would it take if each one of them put in a bid? I mean, I don't understand why that would be an issue.
It's just not the format for C Mar work. It generally, like City Hall, when we went out to bid for this, for, it's all based on qualifications, who we thought could do this type of project the best.
And then they.
And then they, they, they generally take a, you know, add a percentage for their fee a, as part of the construction cost, they'll add a percentage and then give you a guaranteed maximum price. So you've picked the C Mar well before you know the price on any other project. This just gets through the qualification process for some of these smaller projects to say, these are four people we know are qualified, doesn't mean you have to use them for every project. If it's something that is outside the realm of what we think these are, their specialties, we can go out to, to RFQ. But if it's, you know, what I, what I anticipate staff were doing is, depending on the type of project, they would look at the experience, the type of projects these different contractors, C Mars have done, pick the one that has, you know, that's more in their lane, depending on the type of project. And then the general construction stuff would absolutely, we'd get them to bid it. If we're not happy with any of that, you go out to bid to, to general.
One other thing too, that council and, and the CRA Board have over, as we go from thirty percent to sixty percent to ninety percent, if there is something in the plans that we had originally wanted and it's, the cost is escalating, we'll come, staff will come back to you and say, do you want this? Is this something you want? Do we cut it out? Do we do something else? The C Mar will give us options that we can then bring back to the council for the council to make those decisions as to what we're going to do. Once you start tearing something up, you're not going to tear it up for a long time and we want to make sure we get it right. And so that way, we have control of it as we go through the process. It's not an end, at the end of the process, then we get a price and find out we didn't bid, we didn't put enough budget in there.
Okay, and plus, all these things are budgeted items.
They are.
I mean, all these projects would be budgeted.
Mr. President, and, and I get it, in theory, it's supposed to save us money.
And time.
And, and, and time, might have saved us time, but since I've been sitting in here, it hasn't necessarily saved us money. I've seen, we've, we've not, I mean, maybe way back, and I know we're escalating, but they'll miss it by thirty and forty percent, you know? So, you know, I, anytime they come up and say it's, we think, we estimate this to be six million, I think twelve million. And, and that's, you know what, that's, that's pretty terrible on their part to be that far off, honestly.
And, and I agree totally with the, the process, I like the idea of speeding things up. And we've picked four and I get the idea that depending on the project, you're going to know which one of those four. We'll go back to Steve's Clock Plaza. I'm pretty sure any of those four would qualify to do Clock Plaza, whatever we're going to do there, pretty. So if we're, we're looking for the city's best interest, then it goes back to my thing, how are we choosing beyond? If they all are qualified, then I think we need to look at the local people, because if they're going to be looking out for somebody's best interest, I would think it's, it would be them. So, so I think as we do this, you know, we need to take that into consideration too, if we're talking about.
I think you could also say as part of the, to the C Mar, I need you to bid local contractors, I need you.
Yeah, we've done that in the past and then sometimes people don't respond and, and don't, you know, put bids in. We can't, we can't do anything like that, I know, but we're trying, but I mean, I think you got a better chance of that happening with local people. As long as they can all qualify and do the, whatever the project is.
I mean, I, I remember when we were building City Hall, A.D. Morgan was hiring local people, because you, they don't want contractors or somebody coming from St. Pete here, they, they don't get here, they, you know, it's. So, so I think it's more effective for them to hire local people too. But on, on the other hand, if you get somebody from North Tampa or someplace, it's a better price, then our ultimate responsibility is to get the better price. So, anyway.
Yeah, but we're not necessarily getting the better price, because we're only getting the one, the one choice, no matter what.
Well, that's, no, well, let me, let me, let me comment on a couple of things. One, Councilman Smith, I, and I know what you're talking about, the price coming in higher, but that's not from the C Mar. The price has come in from the architect, the designer, that has given us an estimated price. And then when we get the C Mar comes in and looks at it and looks at real, real time construction, that's when the price goes up. So it's not the C Mar, so we have.
Well, in that case, we should get him in at ground zero. Well, that's to make, say, either we do it or we don't do it.
And that's kind of where.
Or Billy, I don't want to interrupt, but like, let's, let's say the project is ten million dollars and that first, the first guy we go, let's say A.D. Morgan, oh, we can't do it for fourteen, well, now they go right to the next guy then. Could we do that?
Yeah, I don't think that, there's any stop from that.
Well, okay, say seven and a half, whatever the number is. Because right away, if they're telling us they're going, it's going to be more.
Right.
Let's say it's five million and they're up to seven point five, well, I think we go to the next person to say, what, what are you going to do it for?
You know, and I, I mean, I just don't get it if these architects work with these guys all the time, how they miss it so badly. I mean, explain that to me.
I don't know that I can, I can explain that. That's.
We'll get them to come in here and explain it next time, before we hire the architect, have them come in and we just, let's just.
We did get the architect in here last time and we didn't know. We did get the architect in here last time and we didn't know, we didn't include the soft cost. So, you know, I mean,
It's always
Okay, I, I just wanted, I think this is the kind of thing that should have been explained to us so we knew what we were voting on. And this is the kind of item, I think, you know, when I say shouldn't be on the consent agenda. So, anyway, I think, I understand it now. I, I, I'll move, we accept it.
Can I just make one comment? I don't want to prolong this, but Councilman Burgess, you're concerned about getting locals and all that. I will say that as we sit at the table with the Cmars, we tell them we want local subs.
Yeah, I know, we've done that in the past. And then, and sometimes we don't get local subs to even put anything in.
Correct. Correct. Yeah, so we, we do make that push to have the local subs used.
I'm just saying that, you know, looking at four people here and, you know, a project that all four of them probably qualified for, then I think if we're looking out for the best interest of the city, somebody in the city is going to look out for the best interest of the city, I would think.
Well, I'll just tell you, I've been looking for a local sub. They don't even show up when you hire them. They don't call you back. So, you know.
Get that guy from Miami.
You know, at home, I, I literally, I call a local company and they'll say, we'll get back with you, and they never get back with you. So then you go to the next person or they don't show up. So, you know.
All right, well, it looks like we have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
You want to turn that off, John? John?
Against?
I, I'll vote for it.
Okay.
Doesn't work, but I'll vote for it.
All right. Okay, motion passes unanimously. We will move on to the planning director's report.
Good evening. Tommy Lee Hunt, GIS Community Planner with the city. So before you, we have a three-part annexation rezoning and future land use amendment petition that was presented to the city for a property on Chancy Road. The subject site is located on the west side of Chancy Road, north of Coria Drive and roughly 2,000 feet east of the nearest runway of the Zephyr Hills Airport. Here we have an aerial view of the site. The site is outlined in red. You can see it better on your screen. As you can see, the site is bordered on three sides by city boundaries with Chancy Road being the boundary on the east side, which is in the county. The site is roughly 14 acres with the current land use, which is the, there's nothing currently happening out there. The existing future land use is industrial light within Pasco County and the existing zoning is AC, which is Pasco County Agricultural. The applicants are requesting a future land use designation of industrial and a zoning of light industrial by city standards. The applicants are anticipating a warehouse and office use on the site with a current concept of a 54,000 square foot facility. This petition does meet the annexation criteria outlined in Chapter 171.043 of Florida statutes, namely that the area to be annexed is contiguous to the city's boundaries and that the area must be developed for urban purposes. The future land use of the surrounding properties are industrial to the north and south, public and semi-public to the west, and industrial light in the county on the east side. The proposed future land use of industrial is consistent with the state statutes as well as the city's comp plan and the city's land development code is also compatible with the land use and development trends of the area as it provides an essential industrial element. The surrounding zoning designations are light industrial to the north and south, airport to the west, and industrial to the east in Pasco County. The proposed zoning of light industrial is consistent with the city's comp plan, land development code, and city codes and ordinances. It is also compatible and consistent with the growth and development trends of the area. As the city grows, the need for industrially zoned properties increases, as we know, and this rezoning and future land use amendment furthers these goals and objectives of the comp plan as it provides a increased tax base and employment opportunities in the industrial corridor. As far as public service demands for police and fire, the demands are within the existing capabilities of ZPD and Pasco County Fire Rescue, while sewer and sanitation services are anticipating minimal impacts. The current proposed use of the site with that, we can't exactly say what the water demand will be, though the utilities department did confirm that our current water use permit does have the capacity to support additional industrial development as long as the use doesn't require intense water consumption.
A warehouse. A warehouse wouldn't use a lot of water if you're storing things. You might have a restroom or something, but
Right.
Okay.
Okay. This project wasn't required to do a major traffic study, though a combined traffic impact analysis was conducted with the site or the property just to the north of them because they're currently going through the site plan review process for a warehouse facility. Access to the site will be shared with that northern property. They're having their access. It's straddling both property lines. Both left and right turn lanes will be required for this shared access, though there may be a exit-only driveway on this subject site just further south on the property. Staff met with the applicants and property owners of this site and the site to the north, the city's traffic engineering consultants, and Pasco County Access Management representatives. As this site is located within the bend on Chancy Road and considering the heavy truck traffic and speeding concerns, as well as the ongoing developments of other industrial users along the corridor, the city and both, both the city and the county want to limit the amount of curb cuts along Chancy Road for safety reasons. So we did recommend and require that a shared access was done for both these properties. So both the site plan review committee and the planning commission did recommend approval of this three-part petition and they both moved their requests forward to city council for direction.
Your, your mic isn't on, so.
Sorry. I have a question about the, how many jobs do you estimate it would produce?
Good evening. Ryan Manassi with Johnson Pope, 400 North Ashley Drive, Ashley Drive Director of Planning. I can't estimate that number now. We're very early on in the preliminary design steps. Obviously, this is the first step in becoming part of Zephyr Hills and the bringing the zoning to you. So I can't comment how many jobs it would
As we move forward, you could give us
As we move forward, of course.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any other questions?
Yes, sorry. On the, and I know we're doing, this is a zoning on it, correct?
The zoning and future land use.
Okay, the fancy land use. The site plan that's shown, that'll come back through to staff?
Yes.
Okay, just because I, I didn't see any decel lane on the right-hand turn. I'm sure that's required on that, that, that road is very busy, heavy truck traffic.
It will definitely be required. That is a very rough
Left-hand turn probably, too.
Yes, and early concept plan, yes.
Thank you.
Move approval of this item, Mr. President?
Second.
Your mic's off.
Aye.
Keep it on. We'll let you keep it on.
You just turned it off.
No, I did not.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the favor.
Aye.
All right, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. So that was both one and two. So what are we on, 2.2 now?
Mm-hmm.
Trees. Trees?
Trees.
Good evening. Todd Vanderburg, Planning Director for the city. Just have one item I'm going to present to you. We've had some prior discussions about the tree ordinance. It's a city staff-initiated rewrite of the tree ordinance for the city of Zephyr Hills. I talked about this one time before. I think I'd shared, you know, a number of comments that have been brought to staff's attention regarding trees, preservation, and so forth, and some of those other issues we'll talk about tonight. We, we, we had a consultant come in and give us a fee to rewrite our landscape ordinance. It was a lot of money. So city manager and I talked and I said, I'll, I'll take on the task of revamping this. And so what we've done is we're aware of what those issues are that have been brought to our attention. We've looked at other ordinances, looked at our own ordinance as far as making some amendments, text amendments to the ordinance. Then we've also talked to some of our consultants and got some ideas of, some good examples that are ready in place. And, and we'll, we'll talk about one of those examples. This is just a planning report tonight. We're not asking, there's no ordinance before you. The intent was, I provided to you some information a couple of weeks ago, and that included our existing 70600. That, that's our tree ordinance, landscape ordinance, and our current city's land, land development code. And I also provide you a copy of Safety Harbors ordinance. Tammy Varana lives there and over the past decade, they've been kind of revamping and updating their tree ordinance. And so I got a copy of that, looked at that, talked with Tammy, and talked with their staff over there and felt pretty comfortable with it. So I provide you with a copy of that ordinance as well. And then we, what we did is we, we took this, this item to the planning commission and had a lot of discussion from the planning commission. They had a lot of good comments. And so the, the next step is I provided to y'all, asked y'all to kind of take a look at not only our ordinance, Safety Harbors ordinance. I, I did a, a copy of a memo of all the planning commission comments, and as well as a, another attachment or exhibit of some general observations of the Safety Harbor code. So, yeah, tonight, I, I have a PowerPoint that I'll present to you. And then what the goal is, is to just obtain any comments. I don't have to have, we, we talk about what we need to talk about tonight, but then i- if, if you think about any additional comments, what the next step is, we would create a new ordinance that would be what we're proposing. And that would come, you know, however long it takes for us to prepare, myself and the city attorney prepare that ordinance, and then that would come back for first reading, public hearing. So, okay. So, yeah, our city three regulations are dated. City council's asked us to look into it. We've looked at our current code. We've kind of identified the areas that probably are in need of some amendments. And we've talked about the city Safety Harbor code. So I'll just bring up a couple of comments. So there's a couple comments that I threw into PowerPoint. And then, you know, I have everything that I've given you and I've got a lot of sticky notes on Safety Harbors that we can talk about. I don't think that was my intent to go through in a lot of thorough detail like I did with the planning commission, but to just kind of go over some primary points and then certainly listen to any comments that you all have that we can use in the creation of the new ordinance. But, you know, one item is the consideration of tree removal permit. City code in Zephyr Hills, we don't require that for a residential property. Safety Harbor does require a tree removal permit on residential lots. You know, the facts are, our tree canopy is diminishing. And that's just not because everyone's cutting down trees. They're, they're getting older and they're just coming down is a big part of that. CRA, Gail, they're doing a, they're looking, the CRA is looking at tree planting program. That, that'll be coming back to you. So that, that's one initiative that we're using. We do have tree mitigation funds that are available to help us with tree planting. And that could be, you know, we'll see what comes out of that tree planting program, but we can use that tree mitigation money is available that can be used on park property, rights of way, and however else we deem necessary. So, you know, looking for a little direction on how the council feels about, you know, do we want to require property owners and residential to get a tree removal permit? So I just kind of throw that out there for any discussion that y'all might want to have on that particular item.
Yeah, I think we should require lots. I have, I have the notes you sent from the planning commission.
Okay.
I think that, I, I think we should require people to get permits. I don't know what the guy on Seventh Street is doing that cleared that. I mean, you didn't, when you drove by there, you didn't even know there was a house there.
Yeah.
The whole thing's cut down and so
Then everything's gone.
Yeah, and before you know it, everything's gone. So I, I think it's
Just notice that.
That they get permits as well.
Can I ask a question real quick? The permits would be for anything that's over a certain DBH, correct?
Yeah, we'll talk about that. For, for us, it's six inches of protected tree, not including exempt trees or diseased trees, but a six-inch protected tree. Now, Safety Harbor, they got a little, they start a little smaller, four-inch, but
Yeah, I, I think you need it to start somewhere, though.
Yeah.
And, you know, you're not going to, yeah, you have to cut down seven or three. I mean, if you look at what we cut down on South Avenue, the extension to Sixth Avenue for that road, we took out, I don't know how many trees. So, you know, it's one step forward, two steps back or something. I don't know.
We'll talk about Safety Harbor, how they got a little bit more stronger stance and how they're looking at all of what you're talking about.
Okay. Then I think that we need to look at HOAs and CDDs and we have a lenient policy there. So I would like to do that. The recommendation by the planning commission was to that staff and/or our consultants review a landscape plan to confirm the right trees are being planted in the right places. Then you talked about
Yep.
They talked about the tree drip line, which I guess we've never done before.
We, we have it. We, we require, go ahead, sorry.
Well, I just think that's a good idea. And I think sometimes, you know, that would help even in spacing trees to where
Yeah.
They don't grow up under each other and, and whatever.
Real briefly on that, the drip line is where the root structure is. And if, yeah, if you, if you braid into that root structure like a live oak tree, obviously, it's going to impact that tree. Yes.
So I thought that was a good idea for Safety Harbor. Then the requirement when development is done, they need to justify why a tree removal is required. And, you know, I think that's a good thing. And, and sometimes I think it, it could help us in the development, create maybe cluster housing or something and leave open space and things.
Yeah, the, the justification, if y'all looked at Safety Harbor, there's quite an extensive, like, a criteria that, no, you got to justify. And if you don't meet that justification criteria, you're not allowed to take the trees down. So
Okay, I thought that was good. And then they talked also about, you know, you know, the number of tree planting requirements could be dependent on the lot size, of course. But they also talked about sometimes the type of tree versus number of trees.
Right tree, right place.
Right. So I think that's kind of an important thing, too. I mean, you could say, oh, you're required to put 10 trees here and if they put little, but if they put a couple nice tree, you know, live oak or something, that would be more important. And then you mentioned here, the CRA and the development of a tree planting, but we also need that, and you mentioned it, trees and parks. Look how we can, and you know, you're talking about losing our canopy. I mean, I don't know, how many trees did we lose in Hurricane Milton?
A lot.
A lot. So, I mean, that's part of the issue right now. So, that's all I, well, I have more, but I'll wait till you go.
Yeah, okay, we'll go through the PowerPoint and I'll probably answer some of your other questions.
And I can give you this where I marked it. And I can give you this where I marked it, so.
Just so we know about the permits for the individuals. I mean, I, I think we should, I think we need to be a little careful about that, though, just to make sure. Going through the hurricanes like we did, obviously, that's, that's an excluded thing, you know? But I did see some, some trees that were taken down by, it was these, uh, people, these, they weren't arborists. They were just chainsaw guys coming through, hacking them down, and they were fine. There was nothing wrong with the trees. So, I mean.
Yeah, we saw that.
The other thing I think we have to do is we have to educate the, the people who are the tree service people here locally and make sure they understand that there is, uh, you know, we, we do have rules on what trees, and there's a permit that you have to get. And I, and I don't think the permit should be real expensive for somebody, you know?
Well, and if you saw on the Safety Harbor, it's a minimal fee, $25 or $50 for the, for residential, and then it's like $100 for non-residential. So, it's a minimal fee.
Can I, can I follow up on Councilman Smith? Because I, I think we do need to be careful and watch how we do it, because, and especially on the, on the residential lots, because insurance companies, they do not want trees above houses. So, you could potentially have somebody, "Oh, you can't take that tree out when I can't build a house." So, I mean, we're going to have to, you know, look at them, kind of like the justification, as Councilman Spine was saying, you know, let's look at everything that kind of like individual.
Yeah, and if it's in the middle of the lot, I mean, you're building your house there, obviously.
Yeah, but I mean, even, even insurance companies don't like anything hanging anywhere near your house, so.
I don't think we should have to pull a permit if the tree is dead or dying or in danger.
Oh, yeah, there, there's criteria that.
There's a state, state statute prohibits that.
Good. If it's exempt or if it's diseased, yeah, but, okay. Thank you for your comments. Well, we've talked about this concern with the quantity of trees being removed. And I'll pull up the table that's currently in the city's land development code on the next slide. But what that table does is it provides thresholds that looks at the average number of trees per acre. So, we, when development occurs, we get a, an arborist survey that shows the number of trees, and we calculate the number of trees per acre, and then there's thresholds of how many you're allowed percentage to take out. Currently, the cow, code does allow for a director to waive the percentages and may require replacement rate of double the inch-per-inch basis for, into the tree mitigation. Now, just go through these, and we'll bring up the table. So, one, one thought that we've had in discussions is every, every site is different, and perhaps tree quality is a priority over the numbers. And I, I think we've thought a lot about that. And, and what, as a staff, what I've suggested to the planning staff is that we try to be very proactive at the pre-app stage now that we do with the developer. Before they submit anything, we, we, we look and see if it's a heavily treed site. And we inform the applicant of that at the pre-app meeting. And, and perhaps what we do is, we, before we even get it, before the applicant gets an engineer involved, we, we look at that site and have an arborist do the survey, and we look at that. You know, because if it's done after the preliminary engineering plan, you know, they kind of got things set. So, I think if we are proactive and get that tree survey done, do a site visit, figure out where are the tree, where are the quality trees, and where, where can we preserve those trees? I, I think we'll be a lot further ahead. Yeah. Uh, let me bring up the table. Here's the table I was just referring to that, that's in our current land development code. So, you see the left-hand column where we're showing the, the average number of trees, again, per acre. Again, six inches or larger, non-exempt. So, as you can see, if you, larger number of trees, like above 40, you can take out 50%. And the lower the number of trees, the lower the percentage that you're allowed to remove. And, uh, you know, if you looked at Safety Harbor, they don't have a table like this, but they've, they've got some pretty strong criteria, both on, uh, what the replacement and the mitigation standards are. If you had a chance to look at that, um, we could get into that, but, um, it, it's just a different way. Um, certainly, uh, what we've observed with this table, there's some projects right now that are in the queue that could be coming forward where it'd be difficult for them to develop as they're preliminarily showing with this table. So, you know, I've told them they might have to go to council if they can't meet this current table. Of course, we told them we're, we're looking at all this, but, um, so, you know, just looking for some input, comment. Th- this is a, a big topic that I know we've had discussion on.
Just one thought on that. The, the property on Geiger Road that's on the south side of it.
Yes.
What's, what's the name of the project?
Province Village is the potential name.
Yeah, I mean, that's heavily treed.
Yes, that's an example.
That's an example of, obviously, they're going to have to cut trees down to build houses or townhomes or whatever are going there. So, that's an example of even this could cause trouble for them, I think.
Yeah, so that, that's one perfect example where we, we, before they submit their plan, we said, "We want to heavily look at tree preservation on the site for you to maximize the tree preservation of the quality trees." So, uh, I mean, they've submitted a preliminary plan, but we've been, for several months now, dealing with the drainage issues and water management district and Craig Cornelius. And, um, so they haven't made their formal submittal, but, uh, I, I think with the way the plan is now, they're, they, they wouldn't be able to move forward based on this table, the way it's written today. But, you know, I, I told them, "Let, let's go through this process we're going through and see where things shake out." We'll probably have a new ordinance by the time that would come through anyway. And if we don't, probably what, I talked with the city manager, we can, we can bring a project through and let you guys take a look at it. Um, so, trying to sort through that. All right. Um, enforcement, um, right now, the con, the city's land development code contracts responsible guaranteeing one, one year for installation and maintenance of all plant material. Safety Harbor, they require two years versus the one year here. Um, applicants required to have their LA, perform a site visit, provide us a, a letter, just like the civil engineer, that everything's in accordance to the approved landscape plans. Right now, our penalty fees are, you see the tree removal, based on the diameter base height is the DBH, and there's different penalties for a tree removal that's not authorized. Planning Commission thought that those fees could or should probably be increased to help deter unauthorized tree removal. Safety Harbor does have a, a pretty, pretty quali- quality section on. If you had a chance to look at the, the enforcement section, I thought it was pretty good. Um, they, they do a pretty nice job. They have good language in there, uh, on a lot of different levels of the enforcement. Um, so, you know, I, I don't think it's a high priority area. It's a high priority area, but probably not a lot of discussion. We, what we can do is provide, uh, what we're thinking. So, some of these code recommendations that we'll come back with that will, will, uh, it'll probably be incorporation of both some of our land development code language that we see fits well with Safety Harbors and go from there.
Todd.
Yeah.
So, one of the things is, we've had a lot of these projects that are done, and, and they have to have it for a year, and then they stop watering them and everything dies. So, I'd like to see that maximum of two years, because I, I'm really tired of us requiring this landscape, and then a year later, it's gone.
Yeah, e- even for non-residential, uh, non-residential projects, we want to look at that. We've been kind of doing some due diligence on how, how that can be addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Um, thank you. Uh, some general comments, uh, require development to remove all exempt invasive trees in the area of development. Uh, it's Planning Commission comment. Safety Harbor's ordinance does do that. Uh, we talked about the Water Star ordinance. We don't have to go into that. Uh, that would be built into the code, of course. Safety Harbor requires a tree survey, but also a, an accompanying tree condition report where they have a grading scale, um, that provides a better review analysis. And even with the mitigation, um, I kind of like it. If, if, if you're mitigating and you have a poor quality tree below a scale of, I think they go zero to six, and if you're below a 3.5, you don't have to mitigate for that tree, which I can kind of understand that. But they, they got a strong section of, uh, tree removal and mitigation, if you had a chance to look at that, which I kind of appreciated how they had done that. So, that, that, yeah, the, the expanded arborist report with the survey, the drip lines, the tree condition report provides a better analysis of us to help make those decisions of which are the quality trees and which ones we can try, want to protect. Planning Commission wants stronger code to require property owners maintain that. Mayor just talked about that. Uh, we also talked about, when necessary, I, I think what we'd like to do is, uh, we have some city arborists on some of our consultant teams that we probably want to work a little more closely with, uh, early on to, to get a second set of eyes, look, looking at these landscape irrigation plans and make sure we're, and go to the site if we have to with them, to just do a better job with that.
Yes. We, with the CRA, we have hired an arborist for a three-year period. Is that one of the ones we've done that is kind of, uh, uh, vetted already? Or is that something that, you know, maybe you could do a design? When you're vetting people for the, um, you know, the, your ranking consultants, include that next time.
Oh, yeah.
And then we have somebody on hand that we could reach out to, or in the meantime, use the one that.
That's what we talked about doing.
That CRA has.
Yeah, I think we can amend the agreement to utilize them.
And part of the next step, so on the later slides, we'll, we'll come up with an ordinance that we're happy with, you're happy with, and then we'll have an LA even look at it as well to just make sure, again, get that second set of eyes looking at it. Uh, Planning Commission policy, like, like the idea of site plan development needs to justify with good reason why the trees need to be removed. We talked about that. Uh, there's also a sliding scale which dictates the amount of mitigation required that increases with larger trees. So, a larger oak tree, it's like three or four, I think, three, three to one plus monetary fee. If you saw that in the example tables that provide in that, that code, which I think looked pretty good. We talked about the score, not six, but five, yeah, 3.5 being the grade on the mitigation. They al, they also have a minimum number of trees required on developed lot based on size. So, a smaller lot, smaller number of trees, larger lot, larger number of trees. We also have talked about at staff, a new standard of open space. Now, this would be on residential development. Uh, that could help us assist with tree preservation, but require a certain amount of open space, uh, predicated on the size, having maybe three different tiers. Uh, you, you got to leave some of the natural vegetation, which could include trees. But, uh, that would be open space, could be used for open space parks, but just have an requirement, which we don't have right now in our land development code, for a minimum open space. Um, we've talked about a lot of this already with the general observations of the, of this code, Safety Harbor that I've been looking at. Um, we've presented the Planning Commission. You've seen their comments. The next steps are, uh, getting any and all comments that we have from, uh, council. Then we'll work on preparing an ordinance. And then before we take it back to you, we'd like to have a consultant review it, take a look at it, make sure we get any additional comments, and then bring it back to council in the form of a first reading of an ordinance.
Thank you, Todd. Todd, I, my one concern, the rest of it looks pretty good, is being cautious like what Councilman Burgess and Councilman Smith said on residential properties. I mean, we, we need to be careful, because nobody wants a big old oak tree right next to their house, especially after what's happened last year. So, that kind of concerns me. And what kind of charge are we going to charge them to clean up the trees around their home? I mean, if I've got a tree that's going to hit my house, I'm not, I don't want it there.
Again, if it's a dangerous diseased dying tree.
Oh, that's, no, I'm not even talking about that. I'm just talking about.
A, a healthy tree next to a house.
Yeah, you can still remove it, but you have to get a permit and do it that way. So, you don't end up with somebody like the guy on Seventh Street that just takes everything out. So, I, I think it's very important to have it. I don't mind having a nominal fee, but I think we should have a say in it. I've seen it in, uh, my neighborhood where people have just mowed down trees even in the, uh, right away that's not theirs.
Yeah.
So, no, I think there's got to be a way to, um, protect trees. If, if, if there's a danger to something, yeah, take it down. But if they just don't like it being there, you know, when it's been there for 50 years, they've been there for five, you know?
Yeah, and, and I. Right.
If, if I may, Councilwoman Wilkerson asked me to, just that she supports the efforts to increase the restrictions on tree removal and protect the remaining canopy. She'd like the planning department to ensure that we require developers to save all large live oak trees on the property, even if it diminishes the efficiency of the site layouts or results in the loss of housing units. Uh, we've been far too leni in allowing the removal of mature, large canopy oak trees and permitting in their, um, in their steed, small caliper, lesser quality, non-hardwood species replacement trees or simply writing a check to a mitigation fund.
Yeah, and what we did get into, and, you know, I got a lot of sections we could, we're not going to do that tonight, but there's a strong section of grand trees, if you look at the Safety Harbor, as far as how you deal with those, what you got to do, what the mitigation is. But, yeah, um, i- if anybody has any questions while we're starting to put together the ordinance and want to go through any of these areas that I've been looking at specifically, reach out to me, and I'm happy to go into further discussion on any of that.
Thank you, yes.
And, and I agree, we need, because we, we lost a bunch of trees during this last storm event. I mean, a bunch of big, mature oaks that have been around for years and years. The one thing I will, I, I think maybe we ought to just take a look at, um, and, and I've made mistakes on, is I plant a live oak too close to a sidewalk, and it starts heaving the sidewalk. There's barriers you can put there that may help. So, it's just, just something we should think about. Uh, maybe a, maybe a minimum requirement of a distance from a sidewalk.
It's minimum distance and barriers, right?
And a barrier. I think a barrier helps, and they have a couple different, they have a mechanical, and then there's one that has some type of herbicide on it.
Okay.
So, it's something we should consider, anyway.
Okay. Okay, well, if there's no other comments.
Any other comments?
Well, I, I wanted to just bring up one thing, because I brought this up to Planning Commission, is using my subdivision as an example. There were these beautiful canopy trees out front. Then they got permission to build a fence line, and they built it too close. So, what went away? The trees, because the trees started
They were nice, too.
messing up the fence line. In my opinion, the tru, the fence line should have been forced to be moved, and they didn't have to do that. So, those are the things that I, I want to see stopped. And then the other thing that I'm always concerned of is that, uh, we have land developers that come in over the weekends and, and clear properties without, when we're not here and staff is not on staff. And there's got to be a way that we can, especially with Google Maps and so on and so forth, to, to.
Enforce that.
Enforce this. We've got to, because we've seen that in our area over on Geiger Road too many times, and it's, speaks to what happened right here on Seventh Street.
Now, Todd, if, uh, if someone did go in and cut the trees down and we found out after the fact, would they still be fined?
Yes, well, yeah, yeah, both our code, the other code, they, but we, we, we have, like, fines up to $5,000 for a protected tree, if they're a grand tree. But, um, yeah, there, there's our, our, but both codes have enforcement. So, we'll come back with some enforcement language. It's probably a combination of both codes, um, but.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I think it's, you've got to done a good job.
Yes.
And we're, we're headed in the right way.
Yes.
I just.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, one, one thing I did want to mention is, because sometimes you'll have a piece of property that has a bunch of what we called saplings, and they're little, small things under a canopy of a larger tree, and they're just so densely packed that you need to take some out to, to let the, to, to grow a bigger tree. So.
So, allowance for that.
Yeah, I mean, it, because really, there's these little, these little ones, they'll grow up very spindly and grow straight up. And, um, you know, we need to make a, an allowance for that, I think.
Well, and again, it's six inches what we have right now.
It'd probably be okay.
They come out anyway. But we'll make a note of that still.
I just wanted to, uh, Steve brought up a lot of the points that I wanted to make, too, so that, and then, of course, uh, Councilwoman Wilkerson. And I, I think the Safety Harbor thing, I looked through it all, though. I didn't go through that entire tree chart, I'll tell you. I didn't go through that entire tree chart, I'll tell you that, but-
Yeah, you don't want to do that.
We did.
And I, I think it's a great idea to, to update this and then, you know, look at it a little bit more enforcement and, and not lock ourselves into any one thing, like with tables and that sort of thing. One other thing that's not to the, or any ordinance here, but I talked with Commissioner Starkey at the last meeting I was at, with her, she mentioned that they have, the county has some, quite a bit of tree mitigation funds, and she mentioned, like, in the city, like, our trails and, and, you know, the right of ways you talked about, obviously county roads. We need to look into that, too, because we could probably get some tree mitigation funds for the trails and, and roads around here, too.
From the county?
From the county.
From the county, yes.
That's good.
Do we have any more questions for Todd? Well, Todd, thank you for, thank you for the great job.
Absolutely.
We appreciate the presentation. And now we will move on to, I believe, business item number three. Matthew?
Thank you, Mr. President. Business item 3.1 is first reading of ordinance number 1500-25. Ordinance of the City Council of the Cities of Zephyr Hills, Florida, amending the official zoning map by zoning two parcels, rezoning two parcels totaling approximately 14,545.8 square feet, or .33 acres, more or less, from office, OP Office Professional to R3 Medium Density Residential located at the intersection of North Avenue and 12th Street, being parcel numbers 0226210050, 50s, 0010, and the south, 44.70 feet of parcel number 0226210050, 50s, 0020, in Zephyr Hills, Florida, providing for conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
All right. Thank you. I believe that this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone signed up to speak to this item?
I don't have anyone signed up at this time.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Yeah, we need to leave the hearing open for his presentation.
Oh, I-
Hello. Good evening, council members. Rodney Corvo, that's okay, principal planner. It's a pleasure to be here.
Hold on a second.
For you at this point, yes, sir.
Now, I'm going to open the public hearing back up.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm on. All right, this is a go now. All right, two points before I get going, in essence of time, yeah. One, this property was zoned R3 years ago, and then under the former ownership in 1992, they rezoned it to OP, I guess in plans probably to put some type of office or professional office there. And the second thing is, through the staff report you see and that you read, it mentioned multifamily and then duplex in some areas. I've since been informed that the property owner is going to do single-family detached on there. So that means the maximum about two units there, okay? So, located at the corner of North Avenue and 12th, and that is a designated hotspot. Zoning came in, we actually thought this would probably be a good idea because a lower intensity residential use than the office professional. Now, in addition, the property owner is planning on putting the site access along the easternmost property boundary, so that the development will not dump out onto 12th Street. So that's very important, okay? Now, the proposal is in conformance with all city land development regulations and state statutes and our comp plan. Staff is recommending approval, and the applicant is here, and the applicant's representative is here also, if you all have any questions.
I just had one question, Rodney. So since it's going to be less intense as far as the, the density, are they still going to look at eastern side as the access?
Yes.
If it's just two resident?
Yes.
Because I think that's a great idea, too.
Oh, yeah.
Well, on a side note, on all these projects that are coming through, and we're working on a couple in initial phases right now of these hotspots areas, so we're very, very conscious of these to make sure that we can do whatever we can until we get the improvements at the various locations throughout the city.
Thank you. Um, do you have anything?
If I may, Councilwoman Wilkerson, I know she wasn't here to hear these comments, but she asked me to, to read this, that she's opposed to the change of zoning to multifamily housing at 12th and North Ave. She'd prefer the use remain low into the office professional use with the structure situated as far northeast, at the far northeast corner of the property, as there exists a significant challenge at this intersection seeing incoming traffic, dealing with the dangerous exit-entry conditions at the convenience store. Access to and from this property should be limited to right turns only.
Thank you. Public hearing, the, the public hearing is still open. Does the council have any questions?
On the property appraisers map, this shows this property as zoned R3.
That's incorrect.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I have the ordinance right here. It's ordinance number 597, dating from 1992, when it was in fact changed from OP to R, excuse me, from R3 to OP.
Okay. That was Fred Groden or something?
Yes, sir. Yeah, yep.
That's from the past.
Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak to this item? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Matt Holbert, 3914011th Avenue, Zephyr Hills. I'm here representing Mr. Butterfield. I assisted him with this. I just wanted to reiterate, he actually is in control of all five lots from Naomi to North Avenue. So that rear load will actually go, all of those homes will have access to either Naomi or North Avenue. That was recommended by staff when we were discussing this before he acquired it. And to your point about the R3, you actually were head of planning when that zoning took place, but it shows other places that it was R3, too, and that was the understanding. So when a title search came back, that's when this ordinance was discovered.
Yes.
Went to OP.
It went to OP. But most records show R3, and we brought it to the city's attention when title search was done and this ordinance showed up in it. So it's kind of a Scribner's error that we're trying to, to solve here tonight.
You're just going back to what it was.
Yes. And as you can see, you know, years ago, this was a mobile home park, and there are mobile homes still in the area, but Mr. Butterfield has taken down the two mobile homes that, that were there on the site. So each of those five lots would have a single family. He's looking at 1600 to 1800 square feet. So being that it's rear-loaded, most of those houses are going to be back away from that corner, so visibility is going to be still, and I, I just kind of took a, a rough estimate. Obviously, aerials, you know, they fluctuate, right? We all know that they're not necessarily accurate. But just based on setback for single family and the rights of way that are there, there's actually three different right, right of ways. From, one from the plat that was done years ago, one from Zephyr Hills Colony Company that was done prior to that, and then the right of way for 12th Street. So there's 60 feet that 12th Street has there, if you take into consideration where the stop line is for North Avenue at 12th Street. It'll, the house at a minimum would be back at least probably 35 feet from that stop line. So that should give plenty of visibility to the north.
Yeah.
I'm happy to answer any, any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it. I guess I will close the public hearing, seeing no one else wants to speak to this. I'll turn it over to the council.
Mr. President, I'm moving approval of this item.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will now move forward to the city managers' report, I believe.
Yes, sir. Item 4.1, Utility Services Agreement with the Evans Orsi. Cities of Zephyr Hills is in need of additional water pumping capacity to meet the anticipated demands of both- See, landowners have a desire to develop their properties and have four wells on site with a permitted capacity of 790,000 gallons per day. The proposed development is anticipated to use approximately 650,000 gallons per day, leaving 140,000 gallons per day for the city to utilize. City staff was approached by representatives of Belmar, Sun Tech, Fremar, Sunfield, Evans, regarding supplying utility services to their nearly 900-acre proposed development. In exchange for the city supplying utility services to the development, the property owners are transferring their capacity to the city. The agreement has the following conditions. Property owners will transfer their water use permits to the city. Property owners are not required to make a capacity reservation payment. The city will modify, increase the water use permit as approved by SWIFTMUD. The city will allocate a maximum of 650,000 gallons per day to the development. The city will reserve up to 650,000 gallons per day for a maximum of 15 years, may be extended for extenuating circumstances. The city may reduce the allocation to the property owners on a prorata if the city's WUP is reduced by SWIFTMUD. The developer of each phase is responsible for connecting to the city water and wastewater systems at the designated locations, which are in the agreement. The city will pay for city requested upsizing of lines. The connection to the city's reclaimed water system is required. Each phase developer will be responsible for paying the water and wastewater capacity fees. Each owner will be responsible for payment to the city for water and wastewater used at the established rate as amended. The owner is allowed to use non-potable water for agricultural use if the owner uses their own well. Both parties agree to work together to locate the wetland monitoring as required by SWIFTMUD. Those discussions have already- Water and wastewater lines will become part of the city's utility system. You have the five attachments, the USA, plus all of the legal descriptions. There are no expected financial impacts at this time. With that, staff recommends approval of the utility services agreement number 45-25-18 as presented. Any questions?
Any questions from the council?
I do. So their full capacity is 790,000 gallons, million gallons a day.
790,000.
90,000, 790,000 gallons per day.
Correct.
And of that, we'll get 160,000 gallons per day.
Roughly 100, yeah, about 140.
140-ish.
Is that enough? I mean, is that, is, is that a lot? It doesn't sound like a lot.
Um, when you add in, it's about 700 units. Yeah, 140,000 equals about 700 units. But this agreement's part of a bigger picture of utilizing, the, the modeling that was, that was utilized to look at the wells and what could be pumped out in conjunction with taking over this permit allows us to get to the 4.49 million gallons per day that we've requested from SWIFTMUD. And that, once this agreement is signed, this agreement will then be forwarded to SWIFTMUD, and then our amended, amendment request to our water use permit will be forwarded to the board, I think, maybe July, maybe August, in August. Wishful thinking. So what that permit will say is that we, we can utilize 4.11 million gallons per day, and the landowners can still pump water out of their wells. I believe it, we can't go more than 4.49. And then if we show the demand over the, the permitted, our permit time, we can reach the capacity of 4.49.
Okay, thank you. Will this mean that we can lift the moratorium, or are we still going to be under the moratorium?
The conversation we need to have, the 4.49 is what we've anticipated or demonstrated that we need for the developments that we have in the queue. But we always have to, so there's a stipulation in there, or in, that's going to be in the permit, that we have to prove demand or prove the need over, I think it's every five years, on the first of January, every five years, starting in '26, the demand for the, the permit that we have. If we don't show that demand, then the number, the permit can be clawed back. So we need to have that, well, the short answer is, we need to have that conversation about either extending or, or lifting the moratorium.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have one. By doing this, are we saying we're going to annex that property?
We're, we're saying we will utilize, or we will provide utilities. There's a conversation, if they want to annex in, they choose to annex in, if we want to have them in the city.
How many, how many units, just roughly?
2,500.
How many?
2,500.
2,500.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I have a question, too. And I, I kind of agree, too. I think the 140,000 gallons doesn't seem like a, a lot that we're gaining by doing this. And my other question is, what is, why the 15 years?
What's, sorry, say that again?
Why, why the 15 years? Guarantee reserve up to 650, for a maximum of 15 years. It may be extended for extenuating circumstances. I guarantee in 15 years, we're going to have extenuating circumstances.
So that was the negotiation. Staff, staff, utility department wanted five. The property owners wanted 20, I think it was, when we started, you know, 25, 25, and we settled on 15.
Please.
There's other, there's other provisions in there, like, i- if they want to reserve capacity, there's still capacity reservation that they have to do, but also, I lost my train of thought on what we were talking about with you, moving around in front of me. I like Clark good, maybe it'll-
It'll come back.
Come back to me.
Mr. President, council members, Clark Hobby, Hobby and Hobby, PA 109, North Breast Street, Tampa, Florida. I can answer a couple of questions about this, and just, just to refresh everyone's memory. When we realized that we had a, a, a volume and capacity issue in the city, I think it caught a number of us by great surprise. And what we found was that the city had been taking in projects and really hadn't been tracking, we were tracking the actual volume of water being consumed every day, but we weren't really looking at what we were approving, annexing, and so on and so forth. So at that time, you all brought in Jones Edmonds as your consultant, and they started a tracking chart. And it has three different sections to it. One has to do with projects that have already gotten all of their permits, and they can start constructing stuff or building houses, whatever, at any time. Another one had some zonings, and then the other ones were planned for the future and were projects that were already included within our water budget, okay? This project was always within that budget, and the reason why and how this is all set up is, we already have a certain amount of future land use on, on these sites in the county that would allow for this level of development. So what we did in working with the city staff, the consultant and SWIFTMUD, was to say, these are the number of units that could be built, but they've got extra capacity. And the reason why that's important to the city is, the city is, and its area where all of its wells are, are within the Tampa, Northern Tampa Bay Water Use Caution area, which SWIFTMUD calls a restricted allocation area. What that means is, if we don't do this deal with you all, you will not be able to get this new permit at all, if we were to just keep things in the status quo. So this allows you to get your permit, you pick up net gallons, you pick up more in the permit in general, and then if we don't use it all within 15 years, you can claw back even more. And how we ended up with the term was two, two parts. We sought a longer term in here, but the city attorney rightly noted that the term of this permit was SWIFTMUD's 15 years, so it's tied to the SWIFTMUD permit. If it gets extended because there's additional need, we might extend our capacity that's being guaranteed here, if you will. I, I would say, just so everyone knows, I mean, there's one part of this property that already has a county MPUD on it, and it's not a whole lot of, of, of units on it. It's on the old Triple J Ranch that Yama Johnson's, Lynn Johnson's family used to own. The Orsi family, through its entities, owns the majority of the property. The Evans own a little bit, and the Orsies have been pretty straight up with all of us. They're, while they may entitle something in the next few years, they view this as being a down-the-road area for them, and they're not looking to sell this property anytime soon or develop it. So all we're trying to do is maintain as much capacity as we need to ultimately use it and get service from the city, give the city some extra, and set the city up to get its permit. That's all this is about. And I guess, you know, again, we will have to work going forward, even if we weren't doing this deal. The city- So all we're trying to do is maintain as much capacity as we need to ultimately use it and get service from the city, give the city some extra and set the city up to get its permit. That's all this is about. And I guess, you know, again, we will have to work going forward, even if we weren't doing this deal. The city's going to need some easements and other things to get on the site to monitor near its own wells anyway. But again, this has been a collaborative process. And you all may recall that, I mean, we had a special workshop in June 2022 that already banked on this happening. It just took a long time to get here with the permits. So that's, that's all we're doing, but I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thank you. Clark, and you said, how many units you think overall in that those?
We haven't done a whole lot of planning is the honest answer. We just did it off of the future land use classification as like a worst case scenario. And like I said, that the way the landowners are looking at it, even if we went, went out and got MPUD approved on more of this in the next two years, their thought is the whole area is going to continue to infill as Dade City's pushed so far south and with the road being widened to four lanes and, you know, we're going to grow over time. But this may be a 10 or 15 year down the road kind of deal. The Orsies have owned a lot of their property in this area for 20, 30 years and they're just now developing some of it.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question and, and maybe the attorney can help me. So, so Mr. Hobby is telling us basically if we don't do this, we're not getting our water permit. Is that accurate?
I think a more fair statement would probably be that we wouldn't get our permit at the amounts that we're asking for.
That's clear. Okay.
I didn't mean to overthink that, but it's, it's what they do is they analyze the amount that can be withdrawn. And there's already, SWIFTMUD knows there's a definitive amount of water that can be withdrawn from our basin. I mean, they know the specific amount of flow over the dam, down at the river. So that's what the, the max withdrawals are all based on. One other thing I forgot to say that is important to the city. We did include language in here that talks about annexation in the future. My expectation is at some point the city will want us to annex some or all of this property. It's adjacent to the city boundaries. And if I was a city council members down the road, I'd probably be thinking we might want to annex some of it. Because, you know, we may, we're going to be selling them some services. We might want to provide more. But again, we're not trying to force that now and we don't have a plan of development.
So that's another question I have. So because if we annex it, that would have to take some more conversation of, you know, that's, so that's not tied into this.
No, they're, they're in our utility service area. So this is just to provide water and wastewater services.
Okay. If we weren't in the, the city's utility service area, we wouldn't even be having the conversation. We just do it.
I have one question then. So the reason this is so attractive is because it's outside of that special area of concern.
No, it's because we're in the area of concern, but we already have the permitted quantities that we own and control. And we could keep them there, but we're not functionally using them very much for agriculture. So again, the city's getting the permitted quantities that it wants on the overall number and you're getting 140,000 gallons a day, which again, my thought had been, I know the city, you know, needs more water above and beyond what's on the list. And we may need it for light industrial stuff out off a chancy over time. We don't know. The council and Proctor was mentioning earlier about the light industrial project you all approved on first reading earlier. A lot of these light industrial projects are highly variable in the amount of water they use. Some of them use virtually nothing. They have a couple of restrooms and that's it. But other, other ones have great employment, but they are, consume a large amount of water. So my thought had been, let's just get as much as we can and you all will have to figure out how we allocate it the extra over time. This isn't going to solve all the city's problems though. I want to be clear, you all still need to be looking at other sources, connections and all that for the growth that you're going to have over a longer period.
And I know we're not talking annexation, but I'd be a little leery on annexation when we didn't have any say in what the project's going to be. So I mean, in my opinion on that, but have we taken into consideration the impact to the utility system overall with this? You know, you're talking, somebody say 2,500 units or something? I mean, are we okay with moving forward with all that on the utility system or?
Yes.
Yes.
100%.
Councilman Burgess, from our perspective, it was important to us almost as much as maybe it is to you all. Because I didn't want to agree to this deal, agree to take services. And then if the master system doesn't work for the city, it doesn't do us any good. So we asked a lot of long and hard questions about the overall system. The, the other really interesting thing, and this is just complete happenstance is the city's system, both from where the connections will occur or water are literally adjacent to the site or across the street. And the, the, the potable station is right adjacent to the site too. So there's a lot of efficiencies there as far as, you know, the provision of utility services. And like I said, there is not a mandatory annexation provision in here. The city has the right to ask us to do that down the line.
One more question. When would we start to connect our system to their wells? Would we do that right away? And then we could start using the water or?
So we will just use the capacity. We're not connecting to their wells because they're ag wells and we have public supply wells. So we, we may need to drill a well in the, in the area, general vicinity of where the, the current wells are, or the largest well is. And that's based on the modeling and way above my knowledge level. But we will not, we will not hook into the ag wells that we're taking the capacity from.
Our wells will be capped. So the city, the city may put a new well that could be on our property. It could be on the city's property adjacent.
Right, but what I'm asking is when would we start using that water, drawing that water?
As soon as the permit gets issued, we will then start, we have, there will be some conditions that have to be satisfied to make the actual physical connection go because there's water monitoring that has to occur in this kind of basin. So we have to work with the city and the district to get those easements and get these monitoring wells in place. Then our assumption, the city would come in right after that occurs and, and start taking our stuff offline and pumping the new water.
But as far as capacity, it'd be almost immediately. I mean, that'll happen when this new permit's issued.
Right, but can we start drawing 140,000 gallons a day from that property?
Yes, I mean, as soon, as soon as the permit's issued, all, all you're doing is holding some back.
Not physically.
So the way it works is we have, there's wells, 10, 11 and 12 that can pump. And I'm, I won't give you numbers because I don't know them. X amount, we're currently pumping at Y amount. So, which is less than what we're currently pumping at. So we can increase the pumping there a little bit to gain that capacity.
Can I ask a quick question? So we're saying we gained the capacity relatively quickly. Is that the full 650 or is that the 140? Like for instance, you know, you're saying or seven nine, I'm sorry.
The city will gain the new permitted capacity, your whole rise.
The whole thing. And then let's just say for some reason, nothing happens there for 12 years. We, we have that capacity for those 12 years then.
You do, but you're whole, you're making sure that you're holding back enough to serve us over time. But keep in mind, there is
No, I understand that.
Because there's a factor between what you're pumping now.
Right, and you know, we could potentially use, but we would have to definitely.
You would have to be available to service. That's right.
Okay.
To answer your question about the 15 years.
Thank you.
And, and this is what I was going to say earlier and, and got distracted, but every five years we have to justify our need to SWIFTMUD. And if for some reason our, our need isn't justified in our permits reduced, the agreement reduces the reservation in prorata share to this property. So if ours comes down, theirs comes down. Also we're not necessarily pulling water from the site. It's all the same, you know, aquifer system. We're just able to pump more.
It's available.
Right.
By having this, it allows us to pump more on 10, 11 and 12.
Exactly.
This is kind of just there.
We're probably going to add a well there eventually, but not right away.
Right.
From my understanding, I don't want to speak for John, but at, setting a lot of these meetings. And then on the, on the annexation, I just want to point out, there's only a small PUD approved. The rest of it is based on future land use. So if there was an annexation, I agree with you. I would want it to happen before any plans are approved. So the city has a say on what gets approved there and what it's zoned for and the use, or the, the units and density and all of that. So, you know, that's something we'll all have to, y'all will have to think about and talk about and what other expenses go along with that as far as other services. But yeah, right now, they don't have massive plans that we don't, that are approved. They're just basing on the total maximum density based on the future land use.
One other question. Do, do we have a conversation with SWIFTMUD about this doing this? I mean, and, and they thought it was a good idea too, right?
SWIFTMUD has been a part of the conversation all along the way.
They're actually waiting on this agreement to finalize the permit.
So, so what we're anticipating seeing in August is a permit that takes us from currently pumping 3.3 million to 4.11 and ultimately being able to get to the 4.49 by the end of our permit.
And we've just got to guarantee when y'all need the, the pumping capacity, we have it. We're borrowing yours somewhat, getting some, borrowing some until you need it.
All right. Is there any more discussion?
I move we approve. I am moved that we approved utility services agreement four, five, 25, pass eighteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you guys. That was, I know that was difficult, but thank you for working through it.
It was a lot and appreciate it. Now we have, we're moving to 4.2, the big beautiful chicken ordinance.
Yes, so item 4.2, discussion took place at the May 12th council meeting regarding the keeping of backyard chickens. Council directed staff to draft ordinance language and bring back to a future meeting for discussion, which is this evening. Attached in your packet, you have a proposed ordinance language and the associated application. The rules that are proposed are as follows. The keeping of chickens shall be allowed only in the following residential zoning districts. So let's fill in the districts. We need to determine what those districts are. No roosters shall be allowed on any property within the city at any time. Any property having live chickens thereon shall have chicken coops or pens on said property in the rear yard only, constructed in a manner to keep the chickens housed therein at all times. Each chicken coop or pen must have at least four square feet of space per chicken. Kept on the property, chickens shall be allowed outside the coops or pens periodically between sunrise and sunset only, so long as the same or properly confined to the property within an impenetrable fence. No chicken shall, or no chicken pen shall exceed 50 square feet in area. The coop must be no taller than six feet from the ground. Any property on which live chickens are allowed to be properly maintained and properly, hold on. Any property on which live chickens are allowed must be properly maintained and properly remove waste products and ensure proper vegetation. Vegetative ground covers are maintained at all times. I gotta work on that one. Any property on which a live chicken is kept that has more than 100 square feet of defoliated ground outside a chicken pen or coop area shall be in violation of the section. No property shall have more than five live chickens at any time. Live chickens shall not be slaughtered or processed for consumption on any property within the city at any time. The coop shall be set back a minimum of 20 feet from the side and rear lot lines. The onsite sale of eggs or any chicken products shall be prohibited. The requirement shall not be waived or varied. Regulations do not affect deed restrictions or covenants concerning chickens. Chickens will be removed after three separate violation events as determined by the city's code enforcement officer. Also, there is an application. Essentially what that application is, it has the, the name, the address, email, phone number, a list of the rules and the individual signs at the bottom stating that they've received the rules. At this time, there's no fiscal impact expected. Staff recommends accepting the proposed language change and approval to advertise for a new backyard chicken ordinance. Any questions?
Go ahead.
There is a application form. I, I thought you were talking about, is that a permit type thing or?
It is a permit. It's, it's a, it's attached to the, to your packet.
Well, I saw it, but when we were talking about before, you said you didn't want to have any permits or anything. That'd be too much.
Changed my mind. Because if we show up to a, to a site and the individual says, I didn't know the rules. Here's the rules. We go back a second time, I didn't know there's rules. Well, here's the paper that you sign that has a list of all the rules on it. So it's, it's a simple.
They'll receive a copy of that.
They'll receive a copy and we'll keep a copy.
Is there a fee?
There is no fee. No.
All right. So the, the violation thing is going to be after three violations, then they have to remove the chickens. That's, that's their only thing. There's no fines, there's no nothing else.
Well, I think at that point, it goes through code enforcement. And if they're, if they have to remove them, and Matt can correct me if I'm wrong here, that's when the, the fines start. If, if they're not
They start after the third time?
I mean, it's not drafted yet, so you tell us. You know, we've got, we got rough drafts, but we don't have.
I think the first one could be a warning. I think the second time it should be a fine or attached to it already.
Yeah.
And then the third time is, I guess, we're not going to find you anymore. We're just taking your chickens from you. Are we going to have a chicken registry or something? I mean, how are we going to know who's got chickens?
It's, you've got that simple
Application form.
Form. And then like we do now, it's based on complaints.
Okay, so the last thing is, and the discussion was if they have a fenced in yard and they have their chicken coops and their chickens and all that in there, we're not allowed to see what's going on. So how are we going to know if we have any violations? How are we going to do that? Can we fly drone up at the sidewalk and look in there at their chickens? I mean, what?
I mean legally, yeah, you could do that, but.
So it's going to be complaint based and then we have to ask them to go in and they say, no, you can't come see my chickens. And then we just have to turn around and walk away?
Pretty much.
We can't change that somehow?
Well, you could hear a rooster in there though, you know?
Well, you can hear the roosters, but I'm saying, what if they got, what if they've got a 30 chicken?
Case law around is pretty well established. I don't think we'll be changing it.
If, if someone makes a complaint about this individual property, you don't, code enforcement doesn't have the right to go in and look. Kelvin?
No, they don't.
They don't. We talked about that last time.
But if they, I mean, literally there's case law, they can climb on a ladder and look over the fence if they want, but yeah. No expectation of privacy if a plane can fly over and see it.
It would kind of be like a shed being built without a permit. I mean, it's the same thing. You, you can't legally go back there until you get an order from a court or something like that. If they wanted to, if they wanted to push it that far. But we don't have the right to go back there to see if they're building a shed or anything like that.
Matthew, can, but you had mentioned, can someone, can the code enforcement put a ladder up there and look over?
I mean, yeah, the case law, there's a bunch of case law regarding criminal law that give a fence and you can get to an elevation and see everything, see in it without going onto their property. And there's no expectation of privacy if that person, if somebody's vanishing from
From above, so.
So realistically, if
Yeah, I mean, they could.
Code enforcement can put a six foot step ladder.
I hope we don't get to that. That's what we're doing, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're supposed to see it from the, or from public property.
So I mean, something's going to have to drive the complaint, right? So not everybody's, I mean, we get complaints from neighbors all the time and the neighbor lets us in their backyard to look at the neighbor's backyard because not everybody has, you know, fences, privacy fences that you can't see around, they just can't see it from the front of the road. The neighbor lets us in to see from there, that, that's all we need. Yeah.
Someone tall.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking out for the, the responsible chicken owners, but this is the teacher in me. Whenever we tried something new at school, the first thing I would always think about, how are the students going to screw this up? So that's why I'm looking at this from, it's like, we want, we don't want it to get to be where it becomes a problem. So I, I think
I personally hope that when you pass it, all these chickens that are free range on the street are all of a sudden not going to be so free range on the street because they're going to be allowed to keep them in their backyard in a coop.
Well, hopefully those will be the first chickens that go after, but it probably, probably won't be, but.
Bring up a good point though, because if you have a bunch of hens, the roosters are going to be coming to the hens. So, I mean, they'll
And a rooster can go over the fence.
They can fly in where they want. Yeah. I have, I have a question too, sir.
Yes, yes.
So why are we doing three warnings? Is there a reason why we're doing three warnings? Because if, if I'm a, if I'm a neighbor and someone's not keeping up their chicken farm in the back, I don't want to have to call you three times. But is there a reason, is that typical three warnings?
So the reason that is in there is So the reason that is in there is um, I believe Councilman Burgess said he wanted some teeth in the ordinance. And doing a little bit of research, I found this language in one, in one of the ordinances and put it in here as a starting point.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the uh, I think a violation of warning and then maybe a small fine the second time. The third time, it's, there's no fine, there's no fine because you're, you're taking, the chickens are gone. So maybe it could be a large fine.
I would still do a fine and removal because if they didn't remove them, if they didn't comply after two, third, we're gonna end up in court. You might as well.
Right, okay.
We gotta pay code enforcement to go out there and make sure, you know, so.
Man, I hope these people don't use this. Last thing we need to do is take some kids' chicken, have the news crew us removing their chickens.
Well, we haven't had any issues with the potbelly pigs that we permitted, so hopefully this won't.
There probably won't be that many people use it really.
We had a lot more public interest in the potbelly pigs.
Yeah, so um, you know, like I brought up the last time, my neighbors have chickens. And is it falcons that come and try to eat them? So they're on our cars constantly because they're trying to eat those chickens in that other person's yard. To me, that's not good. They're pecking at the windows and the cars, those birds are, and I'm like, gosh, I feel sorry for the people like me who live beside chickens who don't want them.
My, my thought more was along the lines of chicken feed being everywhere and rats being everywhere more so, but, but um, I mean, I guess people could do that with their dog food and cat food too, so.
Same thing.
If, if I may, Councilwoman Wilkinson had a comment on this. Uh, she said she's okay with the chicken ordinance, although uh, she hopes that we've done a good job at soliciting public input. Uh, I wonder if a social media post to advertise our plans would be useful. I will tell you that we have not made any social media posts. Uh, we have not advertised and asked for public comment.
Do we have to?
We do not have to. Um, and then we'll do, you know, once we do an ordinance change, we'll advertise it as required. Um, but I just want to address that, that we have not reached out to the public. We were directed by council to look at this and I pulled a few different ordinances from other loca- locations and this is what you have, that's what you have in front of you.
Well, I think.
Kansas County's.
Yeah. I think what you have on there was some of the stuff about not selling eggs and things like that will discourage it. Um, I think there's a lot of good things in there you have in here. And again, I'm, you know, I'm really kind of looking out for responsible chicken owners. I think Rural King would love for you to do some social media thing on the, so maybe it's better.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, when you have a ordinance reading, you're gonna have a public hearing.
Yeah.
And, and that'll be advertised.
Right, that'll be.
So, I mean, that's reaching out to the public. And we do post the agendas and things. Uh, I don't think it hurts to let people know you're doing it. I mean, we want them to know if they're gonna do it, they have an application form. So it's in our own best interest to do some kind of um, I don't wanna say PR, but notice.
I think her, I think her comment was, did we get caught, did we get public input on the creation of the list that you see in front of you today? Um, and the answer is no. So I just wanted to put that out there that I did not do that. Uh, but you are absolutely correct. We'll have a first and second reading that both will be advertised like we do every other public hearing. Um, and if you want, my suggestion would, if we want to advertise this other than the requirements for the readings, is after the second hearing, we put it out. Chickens are now allowed to be kept in Zephyr Hills and here's the rules.
You need to do that. You're gonna have the, the application. So you don't want people to just run out and get five chickens. So I, I would say, you know, advertise it through the public hearing and then just let people know you can now do it if it passes and come get a, a free application or something.
Mr. President, I remember last time we discussed this, I think the Rural King had a sign that chickens are not allowed in the city of Zephyr Hills.
They did it with the, with the pigs too.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I mean, we could make sure that they know that there is a process and they are on. Yeah.
That was some great questions.
Yeah, they could even post that application or the thing right there.
Do we have any more discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I don't know if, yes, sir, we need a motion or just?
Oh, we don't need them. Oh, you just, sorry, just the consensus of yes, move forward. I think what I've heard is change the um, the teeth or the beaks of the ordinance and and one, you get one warning, then you get a fine and then you get a removal slash and fine. So.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think I heard any other proposed changes. Um, so we'll move forward with that then.
Do you have something to say about it?
No, sir. I'm getting ready for the next item.
Gail's ready to go home. So she's moving fast.
The other, only other thing is you put in here which districts and which not. Is there, are there certain districts we really wouldn't want these in? I'd say yes, namely all, but maybe one.
Yeah, I, I don't, um, I'll be honest with you. I didn't, I just put residential districts and then um, I wanted to make sure that we put in, because there are some downtown districts that are like TH1. Yeah, things like that. So I, I, I think that is a conversation that.
I can't answer it. If you could tell Billy's the one that plagiarized these.
100% plagiarized.
Well, I'll just let you know, I still don't think it's a good idea. And I think that it's, you know, when you're trying to build your, your housing base and when you're trying to improve your old districts and then you kind of, to me, this is kind of a, a step backwards. So that's just my opinion.
Well, just another clarification. So if there's an HOA that does not allow it, even though we allow it in the city, the HOA can still supersede that. So that will take care of some of those.
Correct.
Things like that.
Yeah, I guess that's the question is, do, does council want to change the ordinance and allow them? I guess I probably should, probably should have asked that question before I said, you don't need to, I just needed consensus.
Well, you got it.
Okay. All right.
I mean, I'll vote during ordinance, obviously.
All right.
Just on going forward, I. Any more discussion on the chickens? If not, we'll move on to item 4.3, the city entrance signs.
Okay, then the, now these are only the entrance signs that are going to be north of town, south of town, not the park signage. Now, in your mind, think of Hercules Park because they'll all look like Hercules Park.
They'll be the same size.
No, they will not be the same size. They will be different. Then we scale to the location. So we have two choices that staff wanted council to make. Do you want the signs to say, welcome to Zephyr Hills? Then there's one more under, after that. Or do you want it to say, welcome to the city of Zephyr Hills?
Well, for me personally, I like, welcome to the city of Zephyr Hills.
So I'm just looking for consensus. We want to get these um.
Can you go back?
In production.
I like that one. I like Zephyr Hills.
Shorter.
Because remember.
But it stands out more.
You're, you're gonna be on 301, driving by at 70 miles an hour. The shorter you can make it, the better.
70 through town?
I kind of, I kind of agree with.
Last time Gail was up here talking about traffic, she said it took her 25 minutes to get through town. There's no way she's going 70 miles an hour.
No, you'll, you'll be, you'll be staring at that thing for three traffic light cycles. I kind of like.
You just can't.
I kind of agree with Councilman Proctor though, that the welcome to the city is there because we say welcome to Zephyr Hills. And I think, I grew up outside what they call Wesley Chapel now, but we thought we were Zephyr Hills. So are we defining the city of Zephyr Hills or just?
We are at the city limits. Is that not the city limits?
So on the, on the north side, we were looking kind of like, um, oh geez, what's the road name? Um, basically right across the street from where the, the hotels were approved. Terabella, thank you. And then on the south side, we were right at, we're at Shepherd's Park, right?
Right at Shepherd's.
At Shepherd's Park.
Yeah, I kind of thought that welcome to the city of Zephyr Hills on the big sign, but you have those, well, a couple slides down, you have those smaller mon-, I guess you call them monument signs. The welcome to Zephyr Hills to me there would be fine because that's gonna be an other, it's gonna be like right here.
That's correct. That would be at Fifth Avenue.
Yeah, you're, you're already in, you're already in the city of Zephyr Hills and it's, you know.
Where are those going?
In the median. One of them will go in the median at 301 and Fifth Avenue.
In the median?
Median. So it's gonna be small.
One of the small ones. I, I think the smaller ones, I, I, the way I looked at it, was smaller ones, welcome to Zephyr Hills is fine, but I thought.
And I see what you mean. I mean, it is the city. It is the city.
I thought you were, the other ones were gonna say, welcome to downtown.
You've got downtown on there, on one side as well.
So yeah, there's, there's a couple of conversations going on here. One, um, I know Councilman Smith wants to say something, but um, the first two that you saw, the bigger ones, were the ones that were discussed for north and south on 301. The slides three, four, five, and six are proposed in, on Fifth Ave. Um, and I think Councilman, President Proctor has a comment on those as well. Right? We had talked about possibly saying, combining the downtown and the Zephyr Hills, that welcome to downtown Zephyr Hills.
I was gonna say, welcome to historic.
So we talked about this because if I want to get all of that information, because I have such a small median to put that, that little post in, it's gonna be 14 feet tall. I mean, we originally designed it to be really tall so you could get welcome to downtown on it. So I mean, and I don't know, I haven't asked them to measure it out. I'm just saying it'll be tall instead of, right there, it's really more stocky.
This is going right in the median, in the middle of the road on Fifth Avenue?
That is correct. Where the flower beds are.
Where the light posts are.
It's gonna be smashed. Somebody's gonna drive right into it. I guarantee it. It'll be gone in a week. What do you think?
We taking bets?
So you, would you like us to look at another location? Because that's where we had looked at.
You can even put two.
We don't, we don't own that, we don't own that property. It's not our right of way.
My question would be, is how often do our light posts get hit that are not right at the intersection? Yeah, but I mean, they're inside the median. I mean, they're still inside the median. I mean.
Okay, why don't, why don't I come back with a couple of locations?
Well, I think Councilman Smith had a question.
I was just asking, because I thought th- those one signs are big. I mean, these ones like we put at the park, they're pretty.
That's correct. And the welcome signs will be big.
And, and I wondered, I mean, because when you go like where you go into Polk County, they have a similar structure.
Yes.
But that's all they have. Instead of having a winged sign off of it. I mean, it, and in my mind, as long as I know that Zephyr Hills, it already identifies where I'm at. You know, I don't, I mean, this is just me. I've lived here all my life. Maybe, maybe welcome to the city of Zephyr Hills, that's a gigantic sign, you know?
Well, the sign's gonna be that big no matter what it says.
So now you know how staff was thinking this.
It's a giganticly inexpensive sign.
Yes, this is true.
We went round and round and round and, and finally, it was like, well, we'll let y'all have your say because we couldn't decide either.
You gotta leave it on.
What, just out of curiosity, how much will the, the big sign cost, you think? How much did that one cost? That's Hercules.
Well, we know what it costs.
Was it 80 or 100 grand?
No. I was thinking 80 for all of them, you know, because we had one.
The two ones, okay. So about 40 then? There's two of them, right?
60 for the big one.
60.
Yeah. They're not cheap. We have funding budgeted for them. This is one of those things that.
Let me clarify, Gail. So the one that's showing up there right now says, welcome to Zephyr Hills. That's the same size it would be if it, if it said, welcome.
No.
It's, so it is much bigger to say, welcome to the city of Zephyr Hills.
It is, yes.
I didn't know if you were just, I didn't know if that was all the scale and everything. Okay, okay, I see that. That's, that's.
That's what they're saying. That's what the designer is saying to us. That will be larger, that will be a larger sign and it will take up more.
Right, right.
Land. That's right.
Yeah.
And it would be more expensive.
And it'll be more expensive.
And, and realistically, it's, rather, it says city of Zephyr Hills or Zephyr Hills. It's still gonna be. Yvonne, it's just saying Zephyr Hills. There's no sense of adding another four feet to a sign just to put city of, but that's just my opinion.
What if you went city of in the same line as welcome to the city of it and Zephyr Hills is just a big, I mean.
And I will, I will tell you that there is a whole science of how you place lettering so that when you see it, you immediately know what it is. And then if you, because we talked about this too, about running the, changing how they did the welcome to city of and run it on all one line, people won't, won't see it.
So because it looks too jumbled up or something?
Yeah, they'll, they're, they're only gonna look at the big words.
Well, I think, didn't the, the tower used to have city of Zephyr Hills? The water tower right here.
John Slent, yes, yes, it did. Long time ago.
Well, he went here when it was like there anyway.
And the water tower up there.
What did it say?
City of.
I don't remember. I didn't know.
Didn't it say city of Zephyr Hills? No, but what about this one here?
That one said city of pure water.
I think they did say city of pure water or something.
It said city of pure water. Yeah, because we had a picture of that at the chamber.
Yeah, I mean, yes, you can.
So another, another option would be take away the welcome to and put city of in its place. And then you have Zephyr Hills and it's there's that sign right there.
Just say city of Zephyr Hills.
Yeah.
That's not a bad idea. I like that.
Yes.
Well, I, so, so I will, I will say, and um, and I agree, we've all been here for quite a while. We know where we are. We've, I've had a.
Yeah, the sign's not for us.
It's not for us. Because I've had a, a staff member tell me that the subdivision they live in, their neighbors thought they lived in Tampa.
Yeah.
I had to explain to them that they're actually in Zephyr Hills, not Tampa. They're in the Tampa Bay area.
Is it a retirement park?
Uh, no, it is not. It's a very young, young subdivision.
What are we thinking? Zephyr Hills or city of?
All right, let's take a vote. Who wants welcome to Zephyr Hills? Just Zephyr Hills? Raise your hand. Who wants just Zephyr Hills? Raise your hand.
Well, I, I think.
Well, raise your hand.
If I, if I'm looking at it, I, I just see no sense of making your four foot longer to say city of. But if you're going to move it to city of Zephyr, city of Zephyr Hills and, you know, yeah, too many.
It's tough.
I'd go city of Zephyr Hills.
Yeah.
I mean, the ones in the, all the smaller ones, welcome to downtown, welcome to, you know, whatever, that, that's fine. But I just think you're defining your city limits. I think you should let them know you're in the city of.
Okay.
That's my opinion. I mean, everybody else could have a different one, but, but, but I would like, I would rather do a city and reduce the size of that sign so that's.
We will make it gorgeous. We will make it beautiful, something that you are proud of. And when people drive by it on 301, they will go, wow. It won't be cheap, but we'll go, we'll make it wow.
May, maybe you could also fit in welcome to the city of Zephyr Hills somehow. I mean, I would.
Why don't you add Florida on it? Welcome to the city of Zephyr Hills, Pasco County, Florida.
Okay.
I mean, go for it.
It's getting, it's getting late.
I'm not sure you got a whole lot of consensus.
I think we're gonna do city of. I think I counted three people saying city of.
Who wants city of?
I don't know what I want really. It's just.
You want staff to decide? We'll decide. We'll play with the size of letters to see what works best. Because maybe we can tweak the sizes of it.
Think about the median though. I'm not real.
We'll come back with some ideas. They said they could put it in there, but Steve is, Councilman is correct.
54 and.
No, 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 no.
That one's also got this.
No, the one on 54 is just a tower.
Oh, is it?
They can be scaled back. That thing's six foot, seven foot wide, right?
No, we're talking about just the tower, just the little.
I know. How wide's the base of the tower?
It'll fit, it'll be sized to fit the area.
Right, so it'll be smaller.
Yes.
Yeah, it'll be smaller than what's at Hercules. That's my point.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
It'll be sized to fit in the median.
So. So that's what we need to do. We'll bring back a sized version so you know what it's gonna look like. Okay. I see, I hear city of. Staff will come back with a, a final image for you to look at. I don't need a vote. I Staff will come back with a, a final image for you to look at. I don't need a vote. I just needed some input.
Thank you, Gail. Sorry. It is, we are getting a little slap happy.
Yeah, it's late. All right. So where are we here? I guess we're done discussing the signs.
I'm sorry you had to wait that long and not get an answer.
All right, we'll move on to the mayor's announcements.
You know what? I don't think I have much of anything, except I really wanted to thank Shane. Um, we had a group of young people come and help, wanted to do a project in our city. And we had like thirty-five of them come. His team helped me to find a project for them out at the cemetery. And, uh, they, I, I saw one of them on Sunday and this is what they did. They took pictures of the cemetery heads that they were doing. They researched them and then they did TikTok videos with it. That's pretty cool. And, and just to really show off and, and said, now I know about this person and I help. And I thought that was a pretty neat thing. So thank you because I know that you guys didn't, weren't sure about it, but appreciate your staff helping me on that. Because it really was impactful to those youth and they learned a lot that day. So, thank you. That's all.
All right, city manager's announcements.
Um, just, I, I know you guys saw this, well, you didn't see this. We just signed the PO today for the Zephyr Lake cleaning to get rid of that torpedo grass. Um, I don't have a, a schedule for that yet, um, but should be soon. That was signed today. Uh, we also met with a financial advisor, Jeff Larson, uh, to discuss the potential of either a bank loan or a bond issuance for, um, City Yard and Zephyr Park. So that will come back before council, I believe, on July fourteenth, or not back before, but before you guys. And then I will be out Wednesday, Thursday, Friday at the PRM conference, uh, this week. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. City attorney?
I have nothing for me.
All right, we will go to the city council. We'll start with Councilman Burgess.
Alls I gotta say is that we started talking about these signs quite a few years ago, and I'm glad that it took us forever to do this one project because we changed our logo in the meantime, so.
That's true.
Good point.
That's all.
Uh, I just have a question of the city manager. When will we have our first budget meeting?
Budgets are due the twentieth of this month.
The budgets are due from each department the twentieth of this month. We will then, um, go over them, myself, staff, or myself, finance department and each staff department. And then we can schedule whenever council would like after, after that.
Do we wanna wait and schedule it after you're done?
Well, yeah, but. And then we can tweak things.
Yeah, so, so what we have, so where we are right now, staff is filling out their budget, uh, their needs and desires. And then, um, we'll go through and, and tweak them, make cuts, you know, leave things alone, whatever it may be. And then we'll be able to bring that to council for discussion.
Okay, and then, um, so about the fourth, maybe July fourteenth or so.
Yes.
Just kind of.
Yes.
Have you got anything from the county yet on property values or?
Our property, our, um, yes, it increased roughly eleven percent. Our ad valorem collection increased roughly eleven percent. Um, I don't, I, I don't wanna give you a number off the top of my head. Um, but it was about, I think it was like ten point seven eight percent, an actual dollar amount. I'd have to go grab.
I had something else, but I didn't write it down and I don't remember now, so I'm done, I guess.
You did? Councilman Smith?
Yes, thank you. A couple of things. One, the dais turned out really nice. Thank y'all for the work on it. And thank you, uh, for getting it done. The second thing on the water, uh, I know that that was a long process negotiating with them, with Swift Mud. Good job on it, real good job on it. And thank you, Amber. I know you probably helped some, but thank you for being here tonight too. Um, and the last thing I wanted to, uh, mention was the, um, and Shane probably remember Otis Berantine? You remember, worked in sanitation for probably thirty years, I would guess, or something. Um, he passed away last week. He was ninety-nine years old and six months. He was trying to make it to a hundred. I was gonna have him here, but unfortunately he didn't make it. But he lived a long life, has tons of grandchildren, great grandchildren. So I just wanted to pass that on. I know Dondi probably worked with him. I'm, I'm sure, maybe, maybe Bobby did. I don't know if he ever did or not. Yeah, so anyway, um, it's just a really, really good guy, really good family too.
Thank you. I'd like to, I wanna thank Todd for all your hard work on, on your, um. Trio, and it's, I just went blank. And Ms. Gail, on the signs, I know we'd be in a pain, but we wanna just get it right the first time. And I appreciate your working with us on that. And, um, that's pretty much it. Nothing else. Meeting adjourned.